Children, grandchildren, not all of them, just some of them. They believe in... They are one of the major reasons that I get elected to office. They really devote their time and faith in me, and it really means a lot to me. My wife especially has worked just as hard and not done as many as...
Not like a newbie.
Nothing changed on this, right?
Yeah.
Is that what the changes are down here?
No, there's no change.
There are changes.
Oh, yes. Alright. Good evening. Welcome to the April 12, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We're gonna call it order in a few minutes. I ask you to turn off any phones you may have. We'll do the pledge and invocation. We'll do a roll call. Yes?
We need to have a quorum to call the meeting to order.
Oh, we can't even start with it, okay. He's here kind of... He's on the property.
I do have the 429.
Oh, okay. Well, that'd be good. Give us a minute while we wait. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak to the people here, we need a speaker card with your address and appropriate information.
We got two already?
Yeah. Looks like a third on its way. Thank you, sir. Oh, are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Oh, you are, okay. Alright, looks like we're just about there. Thank you, Milton. Okay, we will now call the meeting to order since we have... I do have a... I think we have a quorum. We'll find out in a moment. Okay, we're gonna do the invocation and the pledge. A moment of silence for all the men and women in uniform around the world. And the pledge. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nature and under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as in the law.
I thank you. Okay, now Kathy, you can do the roll call.
Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chairman Marquardt.
Here.
Member Keedler is absent tonight. Member De La Portilla is absent tonight. Member Dillard.
Here.
Member West.
Here.
Member Sills.
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
I thank you. Thank you. The next item on our list is the elections, and I was gonna suggest that since we are short a few members, we have one person, Mr. Briggs, who resigned from the board. Mr. Briggs, I think it was the new guy, younger guy, just joined us a little while ago, that we put the elections off for the next meeting? Is that... Do we need a motion for that, or can we just take consent?
And we're looking at June for the next meeting, not having a May.
Oh, no May meeting?
We've got some projects lined up for June.
Okay. Is that acceptable to the...
Election will be in June.
Then we'll ask Kathy to put out the agenda for the June meeting, the elections. Alright, the consent agenda here, we got the minutes of the... What's it, March 8th?
April 12th. April 12th. I'm sorry, March 28th. Which date was it? I'm sorry, Mike.
I think it's March 8th was the previous minute that we're looking at. There's any... There's no questions or comments on these? We'll look for a motion then?
Make a motion to accept the March 8th meeting minutes.
Alright, we have a motion by...
Lots of seconds.
And, okay, we got lots of seconds. All those in favor accepting, say aye.
Aye.
Sounds like unanimous to me. Okay, moving along to the new business. Well, there is no old business, so we'll bypass that. Moving on to the new business, we have some speaker cards. The first item is the Silver Star Road PUD, and this is a public hearing, annexation and rezoning. Okay, so Tony's not gonna be here then, huh?
Well, that item is requested to be continued by the applicant.
Yeah, it's been requested to be continued, but it is a public meeting, so we'd like to give... I guess we can give the applicant a chance to make any presentation if he'd like to, or if not, that's entirely up to you.
There's no applicant tonight.
No applicant here today? Oh, okay. Sorry. Alright. I think we had a couple people that wanted to speak on behalf of that project. First one is Ron Wayland. Maybe you chased him away. And that was Christine Harris. I think that was the other one. Okay. Gone to... I like that "Bad About Exhaust," our public part of the... Anyone else like to speak on behalf of this project? Silver Star Road.
They requested a 60-day continuance, but we're not going to commit to that. So we're not... We will re-advertise the meetings and resend out the notices, so...
So I close that portion of the public hearing, and as Planner Rumor has just noted that they're looking for a continuance, but not a specific date. So I guess I need a motion to accept that continuance.
Motion to accept the continuance per applicant's request.
Jim Sills makes a motion to accept the continuance. We got a second over here on the left side of me. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, we're continuing to some further date in the future. The next item is the Ocoee-West Road Charter School. This is a public hearing again.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
We... The rules for the P&amp;Z under the code require you have five members to take any action, and those five members have to be present, and they have to be voting. And we know Mr. West will abstain from voting in this matter, so that drops your P&amp;Z membership number down to four, and the code requires there be five members here present and voting. Mr. Rumor has suggested he moved to... We are hopeful that Mr. De La Portilla will make it to the meeting. He had another engagement this evening.
Oh, I see.
So it would be at the chair's discretion. We could move on to the update, and he can go ahead and present the update, and you all can then... We can come back to this item and see if we can get the quorum, the necessary members present.
When did it fore when this happened? They said that me being here would be alright before it gets to the quorum part of it.
That is true. Under Robert's Rules of Order, normally that's true. A person... A quorum is established by the number of bodies that are on the dais, but this is a specific requirement in Section 32 of the City's Land Development Code that relates to the P&amp;Z, the Planning Commission. Five members of the Planning and Zoning Commission shall constitute a quorum, and no action may be taken if less than five members are present and voting.
Yeah, that's the key word.
So you're absolutely correct. Under Robert's Rules, the quorum is five. So we can't take up the item until we have five members.
Well, we still might be able to finish this. Is there consensus to move this item further down the agenda?
In the hopes.
Yeah.
In the publics? Okay. Seems to be the case. So we'll slide this to further on the agenda, then we'll move on to the miscellaneous. Mr. Rumor, you wanna give us the... Project status? And what other good information you might have for us?
Yes.
Somebody's calling?
The Arden Park subdivision, they've moved to the north side. Arden South is one on the south side of Clare Conocoe Road, and they have four model homes. The plat will be going to the commission April 19th, and that'll be official. That subdivision will be open, and they'll start building more homes. We have a lot of activity on the Clare Conocoe-Clark Road area. Of course, McCormick Reserve is about to receive CIA Certificate of Completion, and they'll start building homes. The McCormick Reserve located on McCormick Road, and they'll be building an extension of Clark Road. That's Orion Home Builders Project. The Oak Trail Reserve, which you guys saw the last meeting that Planner Fabry presented, will be going to the city commission, and that will also... That will be a MI... I think an MI project. Of course, we have the Standard Pacific and Ryland Homes merged, and that will be doing the Arden North. The Ocoee Pine subdivision to the east... To the west of it, backing up to the golf course, is a Surrey Home and Orion Homes project as well. As if you've been out to Fountains West and seen the intersection of Ocoee-Popka Road and Crown Point Parkway, we have the Pulte product, the forty-four... Forty or forty-four homes being developed in the four commercial lots, with one of them being the Dunkin' Donuts. The townhomes at Weston Bay are to the last building, so that will be built out. We have a lot of development going on on the north side of the city. City Center West Orange, that is the very large development off of Main Street behind the development that has the racetrack, that has the two buildings with parking garage, retail. It's the eight-story at City Center West Orange. We will be finalizing the development agreement and the site plan for construction May 3rd. I'm driving down tomorrow to City Place West Palm, which is the... What they're modeling the City Center West Orange after. I'm going down with the fire marshal. We're gonna go and look at it and just make sure we're not missing anything with regards to site plan review and looking at when it comes in for building permits. So we're making that trek to West Palm tomorrow.
Will it be architecture similar, or is it...
Yes, yes, it will be.
Maybe send back some photos?
I'm gonna take lots of photos, yes. And...
What'd you say as far as construction on that?
They will be seeking site construction, which will entail not only Main Street, Richmond Avenue, Lake Bennett Drive, and another public road, but also an off-site stormwater pond. They'll be basically getting the pad ready, and that'll take nine months from June. And during that process, they're finalizing the architectural plans, which are gonna be about that thick of the actual buildings. The... Mostly shell, but it's a... The condos will be condos, and the rest of it will be retail and office shell. But it'll all be built as one building. That's gonna take eight months. So about the time they finish... They're close to finishing the site development. They will be breaking ground on the vertical building.
And that... Most of that must have been years ago approved by Planning and Zoning, I guess? I mean, we went through some apartments, I think, in here last year.
No, you went through City Center. You saw City Center. It was the preliminary site plan, which was a public hearing, came through in January of 2015, and it was approved by the commission. It probably came here March or April, and then to City Commission. It came as a final site plan on a consent agenda recently. So... So with that... So you've got a long while until you're gonna have anything out.
I get a lot of questions about that. Is there something available on the website for that that we can look at? On our city website?
No. In the sense of... I mean, just we'd have information on when the project went to P&amp;Z and City Commission and...
I think they have a website, but... Because they've been advertising it a lot over the past several months.
They have a website, City Center West Orange.
Okay.
Yes, they have their own website.
Okay.
Mike, will the Blackwood-Main Street connection be contiguous at some point there?
Yes, so part of the project, they not only have to build... Improve Main Street along their property line, and they have to improve Richmond on their west property line, but they also have to build a southern road that connects back up to Main Street. And then they're gonna build an internal road between the buildings, but it's not... It may be turned over public, I can't remember. But then from their property line all the way to Blackwood, they are required to construct. And that's mitigation for all the traffic impacts, yes, so...
Can they do that right away? I'm looking for more ways to get it out.
Well, the way construction goes is it... Yeah, it won't be open officially. I mean, they're gonna... They're going to focus on the roads around their development. Do the off-site stormwater pond because... And then they'll stabilize the road and put all the infrastructure in. Stormwater pipes are going from the site down Main Street to their off-site pond. You've got water and sewer.
That'll be interesting.
Duke Energy, so it won't be usable for... It's gonna be a mess, just like I'm gonna tell you. Blueford Avenue, and I'll tell you... I'll expand upon it later on. Blueford Avenue is gonna be a mess for a while.
Is there another date as to when it might be complete?
No. No. I'll update you each month we meet.
What is the date right now?
For...
For the Blueford-White Road or...
The Blueford Avenue, they've gotten all the hiccups. All of the 1950s iron-clad phone lines moved and everything, so they're back to refinishing. They're in finishing mode.
Oh, good.
Yes. Yes.
And what is the final product on the surface? Is this something streetscape-wise changing?
No, not now. No, it's not. So from Orlando to Delaware is kind of this... With the work that's going on. On the east side, there will be a dedicated lane. Right now, the cars... Before it was under construction, the cars would pull off on the right, kinda on the sidewalk. Will be obtained right away, so there'll be a dedicated parking lane and then a sidewalk. That's a change.
Okay.
This is Blueford we're talking about, right?
This is Blueford at Orlando, yes. As part of the downtown master plan, and as part of the commission in their last budget, budgeting money to pay for bonding of 14 to 16 million, we've kinda come up with some quick implementation projects. One of those that we chose was Blueford Avenue. The reason we... As an early, and not wait till the end of the study to say we need to redo Blueford, because Blueford Avenue was gonna already be under construction, running the force main from 50 to the sewer plant at the Beach Center. Fifty-inch force main down the middle of the road, upgraded water lines and sewer lines. And so with that project, the Enterprise Fund could pay to bring Blueford back to its normal condition, but we wanna upgrade it, an upgraded streetscape. So we are feverishly designing an upgraded streetscape that we're gonna unveil at the next Downtown Master Plan meeting to the public. So utilities will do their work, and then with that... Some of that bonded money, they haven't gone out for the bonds yet, but they're gonna get some money ahead of time. Put back Blueford. It's basically gonna have eight-foot sidewalks on each side of the road, street trees. It's gonna be two-laned and other...
Public meeting, you said? When is that gonna be?
I don't have that yet.
I got a lot of questions.
Yes, yes. Now, I've got a lot of things to tell you. So, yeah, so you can track it online at downtownocoee.org.
Okay.
If you've tried that recently, before the site was down, you need to clean... You need to clear your history in your browser and go back in, and it'll go... It'll have all the dates of the meetings. You'll see a lot of TBD to be determined. So it's tough finding a space. We had such a big turnout, we wanna use the Lakeshore Center as much as we can, and it's booked. The Eisen Center is booked, so this may be our only place to have a meeting, but on Wednesdays, they have red light traffic camera court, and it's just... It's a mess trying to get... A good thing is we can't find big, large enough meeting space. Who would've thunk that? But I was talking about City Center. Well, next to it is the apartments we're talking about. They are ready...
That's along the Blueford.
That's along Blueford and Main Street that... The relocated Main Street that's built. They are ready to close Friday. We're trying to tight... Get all our documents ready. The way funding is these days in development, they gotta have permits in hand to close the deal. But we can't... We don't issue permits until you pay all your money, so they can make a copy of the permit, but we've gotta approve the permit, make a copy of it, stamp, draft, and then send them the big package so they can close. So they're ready to close on Fri... They're ready to close on Friday or Monday. That will have a groundbreaking soon, and that's for the 302 four-story apartments.
Yeah, it's about three or four buildings?
Seven buildings.
Total seven, yeah.
Yes. And with that, they are providing money, mitigation money, in order for on Blueford... At Blueford, heading to East 50, we'll be designing a dual-left, a through, and a dedicated right. Right now, there's a single left turn lane. So we're designing that with the contractor that's doing the DOT work, so we can get it done at the same time. So there's gonna be a lot of action over there going on.
How they tying their force main into the... Probably the new Blueford one.
Well, a section through the property's already been upgraded. That was when the other development went in. Another project is part of the quick... The... Like I talked, said, Blueford was sort of these implementation projects up front. We'll be extending Main Street from Blueford to Maguire. On the agenda next week, there will be approving the money to do the survey work. And this is... This is property that, in a development agreement, is to be dedicated for a public road, and so we have to get a survey so we can send that legal description indeed to the Colburns and say, hey, remember in 84 you said you'd give us this property and hope for the best? So extend Main Street over. And that one benefits downtown. We're trying to get people off 50, onto Main Street, into the downtown, and having that connection will help. We'll get people from Maguire over, so... So, yes.
I think that's our new hobby is to stay off 50. We kept the downtown construction, so it makes it interesting.
You've seen... If you've been down 50, going to the Turnpike or the 429, I'm not gonna say driving to that other city, just kidding. But you'll see construction going on of a storage facility. That's Cube Smart. It has three-story. The first floor is retail, indoor storage, and then behind it. Well, they bought the lot behind them, which was the Hampton Inn that you guys approved back in the day. Well, Hampton Inn foreclosed on the property, and they purchased it and submitted a site plan for an indoor, air-conditioned RV storage facility.
Oh, really?
It'll be a building that... It'll be coming before you here, and I don't think we'll make it in June, I'm not sure, but probably July to this commission. And that's called Cube Smart 2. We seem to have a lot of expansions of storage and ALF, or development and ALF. The Cube Smart that is on Maguire Road behind Old Time Pottery, if you know the area, there's a little cul-de-sac road. Well, there's an empty lot in front. They've purchased that lot, and they're building a second little Cube Smart development. They're expanding. That road is where the relocated Main Street will come out when we punch it through.
Interesting.
The... Okay, you'll see Legacy Lifestyle Senior Housing. That was formerly known as All Sports.
Oh, okay. All Sports.
Legacy Lifestyle Senior Housing of Ocoee was formerly the location where All Sports was. Yes, so All Sports received approval, went to City Commission, and that deal fell apart. They then... But the company that was gonna finance it saw the need to have a facility in Ocoee, especially down in that area, so they got together with the developer that's doing the Inspired Living that's under construction on Tom and Boulevard.
Yeah.
And then the NFL, that was a part of All Sports, they've tagged on to that project.
Oh, okay.
Well, this property was still vacant and had somewhat of an approved plan, so a Canadian company bought it, and there... We have a site plan for... It's the same footprint, but it's not sports-themed.
Yeah.
So we could potentially have two really large ALFs in the vicinity.
Alright.
Now, under this project, they're assuming the application that was approved. They're not changing anything. So they may be able, just to finalize the site plan, you won't see it because nothing's changed.
Name change, basically.
It's a name change. So... We are under three... We have three different studies. We have two and a third getting ready to start with a consultant. We have the downtown master plan study going on. That was a byproduct of the 429 study, which I'll go over a little bit later. We also have a small area study on the area of Maguire Bonus, where the Ocoee Business Park is, the Viking Supply Building. All of those properties, properties on the east side of the road and the north side, we're doing a little small area study on that to help plan it because it's our last light industrial, and we have some sort of light and heavy industrial wanting to go in there with the property owner, and...
Is that where Bonus Road or Kissimmee hooks around there?
Well, it's still on... It's Maguire now, but it's north of our public works facility, just south of the Pirello Track. And that's the second study. And then the third will be as part of the 429 study we did. We have a moratorium in effect, and we're doing 429, sort of like an overlay like we did with the CRA, creating target areas. That scope is being finalized, and we'll be starting on that. We have to... It'll be a quick process, but you guys will be a part of that. You'll see the small area study. You'll see the 429 Ocoee-Winter Garden overlay, is what we'll call it. You'll see that and get to comment on it. And then, of course, you can be a part of the downtown plan. So we've got a lot of studying going on.
Educate me a little bit on the 429. Does that mean there's some type of interchanges?
I've got it.
You gonna give us a little demo on that?
Okay.
Oh, okay.
This goes back to when the cities of Ocoee and Winter Garden and Apopka joined forces and created the Tri-City Partnership. They hired an economic guru, Angelé Angelou, out of Houston, Texas, to study the Tri-City area, and he did a really a 30,000 square foot of Ocoee-Winter Garden in Apopka and identified how important the 429 corridor is going to be for Winter Garden in Ocoee, and then how much growth is going to happen between Ocoee-Winter Garden and Apopka. After that study, you know, Apopka had a change in mayor, had change in staff. They kinda had the Florida Hospital deal going on. They did their own small area study around the Florida Hospital area and kinda went on their own with regards to furthering a zoning kinda look at it, but they're still a part of the Tri-City Partnership. So Ocoee and Winter Garden received a grant in last year's budget for 100,000 to study the 429 corridor. This is the product of that grant through the Department of Economic Opportunity. And so it really looked at... It looked at the 429 corridor from West Road to 50, and it ended up looking at how the downtowns of Ocoee and Winter Garden interact with this. So there's a study on the current conditions. It looked at economic viability. It really looked at where we are today with our comp plan and zoning and Winter Garden, and under normal market conditions, how it could develop. And it could develop with a lot of retail and a lot of residential and some, you know, some... Nothing, no great office type of development, except for in our West Road interchange area because it's institutional if we could partner with any schools or something like that. But we looked at it and said, we want the 429... There's a map here that kinda shows, yeah. So the 429... So, the four twenty-nine corridor is going to, they're working on this extension right now through Lake County. And so, you'll see, you'll have this loop around central Florida. And if you've seen how much the east side of Orlando has grown, we expect that on the west side. So, how do we make our location, just a mere twenty minutes from Disney, how do we make it a location of choice? We don't want to drive away development. We just don't want bad development to come first. So, we wanna look at it and say, how can we direct, how can we let the, the good developers know what they can get? Sorta like we see with City Center West Orange and the properties at Maguire and fifty. It has that overlay on it that has increased heights, reduced setbacks, just creates some form and function. You can kinda, the use doesn't matter as much as the building and the place. So, it allows people to know what they have going into it without having to come before public hearings to make a PUD, to create a project. So, seeing how vital this, once this connection is made, how do we make this an area of choice? So, we looked at the, how do we target creative digital arts, business professional? How do we target some of these industries? What are they looking for in this area and make sure it didn't? And so, these are the existing land uses in Acoee/Winter Garden. Again, we both got the grant for a hundred thousand, so... And that study kinda came down and said, well, at the interchange of four twenty-nine and West, there's a lot of opportunity there, a lot of vacant land. The Plant Street corridor is very important. It's really important on a accelerated schedule for Winter Garden, because they have a lot of interest in the Straits property. And their plan is to, to, to move their downtown down Plant Street. They've redone Plant Street ahead of that process. And then, looking at the fifty corridor, we have, of course, the auto auction. Winter Garden has some auto auction properties. How can that, how can we help people see the vision that it can change? At some point, the auto auction will go away. And how can we, not necessarily put standards today that says you have to do A, B, C, D, and E, but they can see the vision of what it can be? And so, that came down from the four twenty-nine corridor to just these specific five zones.
Do you think the auto auction's gonna go away?
Well, the auto auction's owned by Cox Communication in Atlanta. The Mannheim is just a subsidiary, it's just one of their businesses. It may be bought out. They have the same auto auction near the airport.
Yeah.
It's similar size. So, we wanna help them see that they can have a, a better use
Right.
uh, over time in the next twenty years. It certainly probably is a moneymaker now, but things change.
Auctions are tenant.
We'd love to help them see how they can repurpose it. So, you'll see some illustrations, and I'll, I'll email this out to you. But how you kinda change form is, everything's going to a more urban form of development, urban hybrid. And with that, you need connectivity, and you need people besides driving in an automobile to be able to get around. That's what people want. So, you'll see, it's sorta like if you're, if you're where, our target area is on fifty. Target area one, we had a lot of public participation from property owners, and we drilled down and put more design criteria in target area one. Target area two, a little bit less. It has the design criteria, setbacks, required streets. We had participation from property owners. Then the third target area was the hospital. And we just did a vision plan for the hospital. We didn't get down to very specifics, because they were not at the table at the time. They were gonna do their own master plan, which turns out to mimic the one we produced, our consultant produced.
What was the second target area?
Target area two is where the City Center West Orange is going. It's Blueford and fifty area.
They're all like in the center of the...
Yeah, yes. Our, our community redevelopment area extends from the four twenty-nine to just short of the mall. Within that community redevelopment area, we did three target areas. So, consider these like target areas. The benefit of the West Road sort of target area is the city owns a lot of land with the school board, but we own a lot of commercial land, which we don't have in other places where we can try to help spur development. So, we can look at this, and we can kinda agree that we need to provide connectivity in this area to make the four twenty-nine a place of choice for office, good retail, good restaurants. And this is just a vision plan. The, the next step is drilling down to each and coming up with criteria. So, you will not see criteria, you'll see suggestions at the end. And then, we looked at the Plant Street interchange and the two downtowns, how they tie in. This is a, the downtowns are a quality of life. If you're gonna get a small or mid-range corporation to try to move into this area, they're gonna need more than just an A school here and there. They need quality of life. So, how do these downtowns play and, and interact with this four twenty-nine corridor? And that, in essence, spur, spurred on the need to look at our downtown more. They kinda did a vision plan showing some new boundaries for an overall downtown of Acoee. And then, I guess, then the last one would be that fifty corridor. This is a lot of, one big property owner and a lot of existing businesses, not, not really vacant land. So, this target area would be more of a vision, even in the next step. It, it's not gonna really drill down much, I don't foresee. So, West Road interchange, you know, back, this is a vision plan. Like, for instance, we know this parcel, and if you can see my cursor here, it's not one...
There it is.
It's over here. We know this is not gonna develop like that, because it's already approved and out, going out of the ground. But what this says is, if you provide connectivity, and this is city-owned property, these blue buildings, and it's already set up to develop like that. This is, it, it talks about connectivity here, maybe a realignment of Lakewood, creating a block, a couple different block areas where you could have higher-end, less dense, potential residential dwellings at the right time as the commercial, because that's, you'll see that red. And even this, it's gonna be a major commercial node at some point. And so, this is just a vision of what it can look like. How, if we provide connectivity, we do, we look at land uses, we look at the opportunities we have, we can drive better development here. So, there's some patterns of what roads could look like. Downtown Winter Garden, again, they're, they're extending along Plant Street to the east. The Plant Street interchange, they've got, this is a straight property they have a lot of interest in. So, and of cour- this is the city's, the property within the city limits is located on the west side of the four twenty-nine. And there's a piece down over here that is in the city as well. Looking at this interchange and, and helping it to, and again, you see, you're just making a lot of blocks so you can have development fill in and have the connectivity, the pedestrian use at the right time. Come up with, the idea behind the, the overlay will be, perhaps you'll get a density bonus if you come in at the right time. If, once you've reached a threshold of office and retail, then if you come in with some density, you can get a bonus.
Anybody know about the Solar Bears, you know, when they're gonna come in, or that, that would be something?
Yeah, the Solar Bears is slated to go on these parcels right, I think, uh, boom, boom, right here.
No, it's, it's north of...
It's, it's just north of Palm? Okay, yeah, north of Palm, yes.
That's right there.
Yeah, I've heard that site plan's changed. I haven't tied Winter Garden down to a reason why it hasn't started yet, but I've heard this... Yeah, so, on... Yeah, so, they're gonna build a... Uh, Solar Bears are gonna build a practice facility with three or four rinks and like an RDV sports complex center, gym, so you can go work out, they'll have some light retail. You can practice, and the Solar Bears will do their practice there. That's on these properties just north of, I don't know if that's continued Palm Drive, but yes.
So, where's our, where's our city line right there? Is that with, with Crown Point Road?
Crown Point Road, yes, yes. This is on Winter Garden's side, sort of their straight properties right off, right off of Plant, across from East Crown. And then, we have ours. Ours kinda shows, at some point, we know Silver Star Road, which follows an alignment like this right now, is gonna be realigned. It's been a project, it's been split in half. Where that alignment's gonna go, we don't know. It most likely will not take this path anymore. That's why this stormwater pond, when you go out there, is angled to be able to fit the, a future extension if it goes that way. More than likely, the road's gonna have to turn well before and smooth out. But it's just showing a potential, what you could do to create, again, blocks for development. It would, it would require some changing of land uses. It, it's just options, but it shows an extension of McKee Street, potentially. These wetlands are being looked at. Create blocks, an extension of Oakland somewhere up here, trying to create a block with Bonus Maguire Road. This intersection right here is very tight as it sits. So, just a vision plan. The next step is to come in and say, what do we want? We know what the vision, what it can turn into. What do we want it to turn into, and how do we get there? This is the area of the small area study we're looking at in conjunction with this. Downtown, it kinda looks at Silver Star. They even went up the Palm Drive to say, you know, that's a, a close link to the West Orange Trail. From our downtown study, where we've gathered, it looks like Silver Star down somewhere near the middle school will kinda be our official, from the lake shore to four twenty-nine.
That re- relocation of Silver Star, is that gonna be an FDOT project?
It's an FDOT project. It is on the funding list only for design, and it's, it's been either from number thirteen to number sixteen. And that's only designed, the, the engineering, construction, right-of-way acquisition, it's a long way off. But we are putting, uh, we're going to put a full court press on trying to get this project going with different lobbyists we have, lobbyist firms we hired. We've got, already got Orange County signed on. We've got the county commissioner, um, his name, he was the, Brian Nelson, signed on. So, we're gonna get all those letters, we're gonna get a push to try to get it to the floor. You wanna put a pause on this and come back?
How much more you got to go?
A while.
Oh, okay. Well, we can stop here with this and continue with the agenda. Thanks, we have a special guest of honor, number six. How you doing?
It's good to be back on P and Z.
Kathy, let the rec, the record reflect that Angel is here.
Yes, Mr. De La Portea is not present.
So, we have a six, quorum of six today. All right, with that arrival, we will go back to our item B and the new business. This is the Acoee West Road Charter School.
Yeah, for the record, Mike, rumor city planner. This is the preliminary and final site plan approval for the Acoee West Road Charter School at Arbers at Crown Point, PUD. The project is LS two thousand sixteen dash oh oh four. Again, this is the preliminary final for the Acoee West Road Charter School, eleven hundred and forty-five student, K through eight charter school at the Arbers of Crown Point. It's located on the west, on the north side of West Road, you know, west of the West Orange Trail, and you have an access from Fountains West Boulevard. The, it's consists of ten point four nine acres on two parcels, which will be combined to facilitate the charter school. Again, there's a, the West Orange Trail is on the east side, and there's a seventy-three-foot Duke Energy Power easement, transmission easement along, over the trail along the property line. The school received, the PUD was amended to allow a school as a use for the K through eight, eleven hundred and forty-five students on March fifteenth of two thousand and sixteen. The site is cleared for the apartments and consists of a sixty-eight thousand square foot two-story school. It's a single school building with associated totlot, basketball court, and athletic fields. There's a lot of confusion in the PUD process. The engineer on the PUD, this tract was a commercial tract, and that tract label kept following and ending up in the middle of the field, and it looked like this was gonna be a second commercial parcel. It's not. This PUD will be built out. It will have the school, the totlot, the basketball courts, and the activity fields. And then, you have the two hundred and forty apartments on the north. So, this PUD will be finished. The recreation fields will not be lighted. Stormwater retention is located on the east side, I mean, on the west side. There's a little stormwater pond being developed with this portion of road. Under the Arbers PUD, the existing road, it's called Fountain West Road. We're gonna change the name to Fountains with an S, because that's the name of the development to the west. The pavement ends at this point. The apartments, which are under construction, are gonna pave up to a, a point on their site. And then, this lot where the charter school is will finish paving the road. The road will not end exactly like this at the trail, or it, it will, but we're gonna have it fenced off with a emergency gate, so people don't hang out down there. But we will have the road built to this point, to the trail, and this will provide future opportunity for parcels to the east. They will have a dedicated access they know they can use. There's some down on this southern end, it's not clear exactly how all those parcels will, will get access or where they're providing access to that site. With regards to the school, the school is accessed from this remnant piece of West Road, which is developed to a suitable standard up to a point past the entrance. It is intended to be an entrance and exit with the cars going around to a point, dropping off at this part. What's different from what you saw at the planning and zoning meeting was, this was the sole entrance and exit. What has changed from the P and Z meeting and subsequent meetings with Orange County is a need to have cars, at least be able to exit on the Fountains West Boulevard, so they can come down here to this point and have a directional left now. So, the plan has been revised to show access on Fountains West Boulevard. Under the review of Orange County and the city's engineer consultant, the, changing the trips, now, some trips will still leave here, majority will leave at this point. This is not intended to be an entrance during morning drop-off. It's intended to be an exit only, and that will be facilitated through the school with cones. The, we, so, let me go back to Orange County. Orange County, the, the need for signalizing the intersection, the intersection is not signalized. The trips from the school now, if you recall, under the PUD, it was allow, it was allotted up four thousand trips. The Arbers Apartments in the school will not come close to meeting that trip allotment. However, they do have a different trip generation peak time. The transportation study done by the consultant, reviewed by Orange County and the city's traffic engineer myself, did not indicate a need for a traffic light at this time. Orange, this is an Orange County road. Orange County will not put in a traffic light until a warrant is met. So, the school has, the applicant has three responsible times they have to provide a warrant analysis. With, and, and it's, it's basically eighty percent built out. It's when the apartments get, get finished being constructed, and then a third point, six months after that. And the applicant maybe will expand upon that. So, they'll do three signal analysis once there's traffic being generated, but there is no traffic signal warranted at this time. So, with the site, you do have access from here, you go around, and you can exit if you need to make the left, or you can exit this way. This access point will be, we will, it's... This access point will be, we will, it's intended to not be an entrance during school hours, drop-off hours, but it'll be open during the day when you just have the random late student, or you have other office visits.
Will we open at the exit times, I mean, the exit times when the school is closing, will we open then to allow people to?
Yeah, it's not intended to be an entrance on school drop-off or pickup, so yes.
Exit, yes.
Yes, 'cause the, we do not want to have cars backed up onto this, to this road. So, the applicant understands that, and it'll be monitored. So, if we see cars, under their condition of approval, it's an exit. There is a, as part of an overall drainage of all the properties, there is a swell that runs through this point, so you do have some, and there's a swell on the other side of the road, you do have a lot of stormwater in the area. It does not contain environmental sensitive areas of wetlands or a hundred-year floodplain. The construction of road will happen, I don't wanna miss anything with this site plan. They'd have received Saint John's permit, this is, a water and sewer is in Orange County. However, they will be helping the city by looping the reclaimed water in the area. It is our reclaim, we purchase it wholesale from the county. They will be running a line north and south, and east and west, and the reclaim line will end up over here, it'll be looped, it'll be, have enough capacity to service the properties over to the east. And with that, I can entertain any questions.
All right. Any questions from the board?
Mike, the reclaim orders, are they gonna be used on the playground and all for the school?
Okay, so, the reclaimed water will certainly be used in the, all the landscape areas. I do not know if it will be used on the field. I don't know if they've determined whether it's gonna be astroturf or grass. I think it shows it as future sod, they can answer that question. But the, certainly the pond, the landscaping around the ponds and all the landscape islands will be reclaimed, sir. That is a requirement, yes.
When the study is completed on that intersection of Fountains West where it connects, who will pay for that traffic signal?
Yes. That will be, at the time of the warrant, it'll be a mitigate, it'll be Orange County. This applicant will have some sort of proportionate share based off the formula that the Orange County has, but it will be by Orange County.
Okay. So, you know, when, when that's built out, is it gonna be that?
When it's built out, when every, when you have the church property and stuff to the east, yes, it will. But it didn't require one, when this was gonna be commercial and generate almost five thousand trips, it didn't. And this one has a peak time for less than an hour a day, that doesn't generate the need to have a traffic signal, so.
Mike, since the last time this was before us, has there been land added to this parcel?
No, not at all.
Same volume?
Yes, same footprint as in the PUD.
Now, this is, this isn't the city of Akoi, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, now, the water and sewer is Akoi?
No, water and sewer is not. Orange County water and sewer territory extends basically from, a lot of Clercon Akoi Road area, yeah, everything north is, and then on McGuire Road at the far south east side, it's Orange County as well.
All right.
So, Weston Bay, all those are in Orange County water and sewer.
Believe in the high school?
Yes.
Will there be any provisions at the intersection of Clerco, no, Akoi, Apopka Road and West, I guess it's West Road?
Yes, no, there's no.
Clercon Akoi?
Because.
Or extra left turn, is that?
No, because of the ability to make the left turn out of Fountain West Boulevard.
Because of that, okay.
All those trips have gone away. As part of the PUD, now, this was a requirement of the PUD, not just this development, they, on the trips they were generating, the higher number, there was a downstream effect at Cler, at Akoi, Apopka, and Fuller's Cross Road.
Yes.
And that was because Eagle Creek, which is not built, but they are vested, they had an impact, they paid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward improving that intersection, excuse me, Glad Tiding Church had an impact, I think they've got a thirteen thousand dollar payment due soon. This paid like thirty-eight thousand towards that intersection based off that traffic generation.
That's gonna be a busy spot.
And so, what we will do at some point is add dedicated left turn lanes on all directions so you can get the cars out of the way so you can go through and move more freely. That mitigation payment by the PUD has been paid.
Okay. Any other questions by the board? Hearing none, we'll invite the applicant to the podium to talk about this, if they're here. Is that Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Are you open in the public hearing?
Not yet, soon, not yet. Gonna invite Mr. Lucas to enlighten us on some of this.
Thank you, Todd Lucas, with Summit Construction Group, four twenty-one South Summerlin Avenue in Orlando, three two eight zero one. It really turned in my card, if you had questions you'd like to ask, I think Mike's done a great job of sort of explaining what we've been able to accomplish. I think a couple of things I wanted to reiterate that he had mentioned is that we did have two or three separate meetings with Orange County about the traffic light because we know that it was a big concern when we came into this meeting originally, and at the city commission, and because of that, and because Orange County did not want and would not agree to put a light there, we had agreed to three different warrant analysis studies at our expense to determine when and if it's justifiable at those stages that Mike had mentioned, and it's also part of the development agreement that we have drafted and we're executing with the city. Regarding the grass, he had asked about turf or non-turf. The school typically likes to put astroturf in, it's a permeable, high-end astroturf, and that's what we would like to put there, and had planned to put there. And it was a discussion based on drainage calculations, and we've just, literally from the last couple of days, come to a decision that the turf that is provided and the permeability of that turf works with the drainage calculation, so that's probably the direction we'll go. Reclaim will be feeding the remainder of the property for landscaping and things, but also obviously be available to the neighbors down the road and down the future, in the future. Another thing I did wanna mention too is that as a public school and a nonprofit organization, there's, there's not a fee requirement, but again, and we appreciate the work that we've done with the city of Akoi, and we've agreed to do a payment in lieu of taxes because as a public school, there's not a tax requirement that we've agreed to, as, excuse me, as well as, you know, paying fees for fire and police and some of those, I wanna make sure we give back to the community as well, so. If there are any other questions, we're here.
Going back to the intersection, will you be providing police?
We agreed in the, agreed in the public hearing and in the development agreement that if there's a need for it based on traffic, that they would be bringing in an off-duty officer to control traffic and work that.
At your expense?
At our expense, yes.
Going back to the turf, you said, you said you did agree with the astroturf?
Well, sorry, see, was a question?
Was that clear? It wasn't clear, was it?
We're fine with the astroturf.
Oh, we are, okay.
It's just, the whole site is designed in parameters, gets approved by Saint John's, they just needed to show the technical that the turf can still stay within that criteria, and it does, so we're fine with turf for the field.
And it saves water, so.
Yeah, certainly.
Any questions, guys?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the public hearing portion, if there's anyone like to speak, I don't have any cards for anybody, but anyone like to speak about this item, please approach the podium and fill out a speaker card.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to declare that I have a conflict of interest in that I will not be voting. However, I do have the right to indulge in the conversation.
I was gonna talk to you about that.
The discussion, right.
Okay. You understand, Mr. West has an interest in the program, so he won't be voting, he can be involved in discussion, as far as I know. With that, was there any questions of applicant or of the staff? Mr. Rumor? I think I'm satisfied with the, with the traffic flow, that was my biggest heartache before. I think we're all were kinda concerned about that, so. We appreciate the applicants meeting us halfway on a lot of those issues. As you understand from the proceedings, it was rather important to many of us, so. All right, so at that point, I'll be looking for a, we're closing the public comment, and we'll be looking for a motion. Anyone wish to step forward?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move a recommendation that the Planning and Zoning Commission Act, the official board for the city of Akoi, approve Akoi West Road Charter School at Arbers at Crown Point, PUD. Preliminary, final site plan, project number LS two zero one six dash zero zero four.
Okay, we have a motion before us. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, and I have a question, please. Michael, does this go back to the city commission after tonight?
Yes, it does.
What's the date?
Next Tuesday.
April.
Okay.
Nineteenth.
I can help you, I can help you.
And the applicant is going to be able to deliver the school, open the school in time for the start of the school year in late August? Mike?
That is under our, trying to be developer friendly, and not only with site plan, but under building permits. We are trying to make ourselves available to help that happen as much as we can, and we expect. We've been meeting with their construction team and hope to be able to make that happen.
Let's hope for good weather and no hurricanes this summer, okay?
If, if falls in order.
By the way, I seconded that motion.
Yes, you did, yeah. But by the way, to follow that, that date is the nineteenth of April at that next commission meeting, and this will be probably on the agenda at that point. All right, I have a motion and a second. More discussion, we'll move to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have one abstention, or, I guess, what do you call it?
Substant.
Ace substance. So, it's five, is one abstention. Okay. Is that, is that, anything else, Mike?
That's it on that, public hearing items. I'll real quickly finish up the four twenty-nine study. So, again, it's a, it's an eight thousand square, it's an eight thousand foot view, yes, which we will drill down. So, kind of the downtown, again, this is a vision of what can happen if we are studious and forward-thinking and create some criteria from the lake shore to the four twenty-nine, we can have a lot of good things happen. That's what the downtown study is for. We're seeing a lot of input, if you go to downtownakoi.org, the website's ready, and it's populated with pictures.
Has this study?
It does not have this four twenty-nine study in it. I will email that to you separately.
Okay, good.
We're hearing a lot of good comments about the lake shore is a focal point, and we, as staff, agree that's what sets us apart from our kinda neighboring downtown, so we're hearing really good comments. So, this is, how do we get to this, and what does it mean? That's what we're studying further, but this, this study just kinda goes over some ideas. There's opportunities for improving a part of the process with Silver Star, getting involved at, coming up with a street scape for Silver Star, here's one for an Oakland Avenue. With regards to what Commissioner Markot had asked about Blueford Avenue, that streetscape ties into, you know, McKee, Oakland, Floral, we're looking at those intersections, how to make it a more pedestrian-friendly and try to get people to wanna drive and stay downtown and park their car.
So, Mike, what do you do with some of the properties that are just, I mean, we have several that are sprinkled throughout that.
Well, you, you do some strategic, what needs to be done is some strategic property acquisition. What needs to be done is selling that, that vision to everybody. A lot of people would say, our downtown is only this, it's only McKee Street, it's understanding, it's the lakefront, it's a lot of things. Yeah, we wanna emphasize, we wanna emphasize our historical area, we want that vision to be seen and bought. If people don't buy into it, and it's people that live over where you live. They need to know that they can get here and it is gonna be a place they're gonna wanna stay for some, some reason. A lot of the comments are very specific at this point, and we don't wanna be specific, we want people to tell us the goal. My goal is to not have to take my car from point A to get there, or if I do, I wanna be able to park and not have it be hot. I wanna be able to walk in shade, so that's the goal, is to be able to get pedestrian and non-motorized people to come, be able to come down there, or if you do have to take your vehicle, have it in a place where you'd wanna park it and keep it, feel safe, and have an activity, so. It's, it's getting them to understand the vision.
Understand.
Yes, and some of it will be coming back and doing land use amendments on property. A lot of the properties going from the campus here to the four twenty-nine have a commercial zoning already, but there's some residential.
So, those are probably okay, it's, there's.
Yeah, but it might be allowing a mix, maybe moving some that are residential, changing those to commercial. For instance, if, you can have McKee and Oakland be a block of commercial, well, all of Oakland is residential. So, you change the land use and zoning on Oakland and some properties on McKee to be mixed use, or it's just commercial, or maybe it's just, in going from Blueford, you transition. The hotspot of Akoi is the lake, okay? So, you have the commercial kind of maybe transition from the lake, you have the commercial, then it goes back to maybe something, the appropriate small, I like to think brownstone, but some sort of residential development, a little bit more density, going to the four twenty-nine, then where you'd have office and commercial and tying it in. So, it's, it's land use amendments, strategic property acquisition, selling the vision, and helping people understand what can happen.
For many years, I've been on the Metro Plan Orlando Board, and originally it was just a bicycle pedestrian, was kind of that focus, but it has changed to an intermodal. And over that time, I've joined the Rails to Trails and some other groups, and you can see how these areas changed because they changed focus from strictly bicycles and pedestrians to inter, multi-modal, where you've got various things.
Yes.
The whole point is to get people walkability.
Well, you gotta get the residents, they're buying into it, right.
You gotta get complete streets, walkability, and I think how, what we should do is really brick the streets, put in wide sidewalks, add more lights, and those properties will suddenly become valuable to other people who will want to put things there.
Yes.
Either put in little boutiques, or.
Yeah, there's developers out there.
Cause we have a lot of historic buildings there, and a lot of the people that were expressed at that tour we took were concerned that these buildings are gonna go away.
Yes.
So, even though they're residential now, they could be converted to small shops and of sorts.
And we don't have the benefit of having our downtown being a CRA. We have one CRA and it's on fifty. So, there's some potential money that's not gonna be there with tax increment, but facade grants, there's different things that we can do to help the existing businesses with facade grants, there's, there's a lot of different things. There's companies, if you look up White and Chalice, they do a lot of little lots, they build dual-purpose buildings, small parcels, they do a lot in Deland. People will come in and invest. What they're gonna see is, we're gonna provide sewer to our downtown, which is not there.
Which is there, yeah.
That's the biggest hiccup. No one's gonna invest their money and have to hope that the septic system will last them, or. You can't build, you need green space for the drain field.
That's what I'm saying, we need to provide a good viable space for people to come in and make it attractive to come invest, and those places that we feel would be, you know, they'll move out, they'll sell the property because they can make some money on the deal so they, they don't lose. And this is what's happened over and over again around the country. In some cities like even Detroit, they've stopped the trains on the Ls and turned them into green space and walking paths.
Well, the commission.
Nobody would've ever expected that to happen thirty, forty years ago.
And just knowing that the commission's putting fourteen to sixty million, whatever amount they bond, into the downtown area, providing sewer is enough to take notice, companies will take notice. It's gonna be a long-term project, but what can we do quickly? At the end of the study, when you see the study booklet, and that's what the end of this study has, you see these, oh, does it, there, this one does not have a thirty, I picked the wrong one, maybe I did.
Well, the city down the road, but they've been working there twenty-five years, so.
Yeah, there's an implementation, there's an implementation section, and the implementation section will say, you need to do this, and this is the cost, and the costs are gonna be high, and it's gonna be spread over time. It would be great if the citizens attend the final meeting on the downtown study and say, thanks for being a part of it, hopefully it was a good experience, and we think you need to do these implementation steps, we want you to fund these now, whatever they are. That would be. want you to fund these now, whatever they are, that would be, that would be great, that would give our commission direction.
This sewer on Blueford is, is the first step to getting sewer downtown, right?
Yes, so what's-
This building's already on sewer, obviously.
Yes, it has a lift station, yes, but it runs a different way, there's, yes, it's, it's weird how it works. So, the plan is already engineered, as I said, to, to run the sewer, the force main, which provides the capacity and lines, and so they're looking at, where do we run lines? Right now, it doesn't look feasible to run lines towards the residential area to the east over kind of where Mr. Sills work, lives, but run it down the alleyways on McKee, all the businesses there, septic tanks are in the rear, run the sewer down the alleyways on the Sills Alley and then the other one behind the cafe, and then run sewer down Oakland-
Yeah.
And then perhaps down Franklin, that, that'll get sewer in the area, and that'll get it in front of parcels that people can develop on today.
Yeah, and once that happens, and once it happens, then the mixed use starts and people, you know, as part of their fee is to get that connection.
There's going to be people with residential lots that, they'll know it's going to be future commercial, and they're going to hold out for a good dollar, bless them, that's, that's their right, the, but at some point, somebody will come in and accumulate enough properties to make it work.
I mean, if you look at Mount Dora, most of that was residential at one point, now those streets have got all these little shops and kind of stuff that's, that produces people walking the streets.
I think the commitment, you know, back, actually where Blueford and 50 is, that development's called City Center, or Ocoee Town Center. Early, mid 2000s, we kind of thought, well, and the commission said, we might move City Hall down that area, sort of like how Lake Mary has theirs, well, since that time, they did the strategic planning session and the commission said, no, we're keeping the future City Hall that we need in, in the downtown area, so.
Yeah.
What does that City Hall need to be, does it need to be a focal point, does it need to be a place, place of commerce where you do city work, but you can also hit a bakery or something, there's a lot to look at.
But, well, there's a lot of examples of that success, Brayton's another one, where the police and government's right in the center of that, right next to railroad tracks, there's a big park and a riverwalk and-
We need a trail, we need a trail from the lakefront going to Plant Street.
And once we get connectivity situation, we can get grants, apply for grants for that, so that's, it's out there.
And what happens is, in order to get the grants, you need to have a PD and E study on the area.
Yeah.
We have nice colored renderings, it's not enough to get you a grant, so this downtown study will drill down and then we can kind of do the PD and E and then apply for grants.
Well, if we can show a plan how we can connect from the West Oaks Trail, West Orange Trail over by 429, and then go up Blueford to connect to Lake Shore up there at the other side of it, we, we have something that we can look for grants for, money.
Yeah, and this fluorescent yellow line you see that I'm tracing is the West Orange Trail, and so with, and it runs through Ocoee, but in our northern, really suburban area, so there's an opportunity to connect on a Ocoee, Apopka Road and bring it all the way to our downtown, that's an Orange County road, we don't ha, own the right of way, we looked at connecting it somehow going up Palm, and this is another close location, unfortunately, in Winter Garden, this is an industrial park, four-foot sidewalk, chain-link fence up against the properties, it is not going to work, so really our closest connection is getting a trail down here, they've redone the sidewalk, Plant Street's redone, ride the sidewalks to this point, then you can hop on the trail. And part of this, though, you'll see, is in the study, to be, to be something, more than it is now, and, and give you enough confidence that you can ride your bike down here and, and have a nice ride, get on the trail and go wherever you want to go, vice versa, they can come, come our way, so.
Well, there's enough room and time to get those trees planted, so there'll be a nice canopy to go along there.
Yes, yes, yeah, there is, and some of the comments are, we want the palm trees back on Plant Street like they're used to be.
No, sir?
There's one palm, there's one palm tree left. There's one left, it was lined, yeah.
I did remember that photograph.
Yes. This, this, I picked the wrong presentation, it was an early draft, but there was a nice one, I'll show it another time, of the aerial, they showed it at the downtown master plan meeting, the aerial of what, you know, there was basically two miles of citrus grove between the downtowns. And it's still, for us, we have a lot of vacant land that can be something really spectacular.
That's why we need to try to stake out a, a trail, it doesn't have to be along a road, it's better if it's not along a road, but up through the, you know, away from maybe through that property alongside there someplace.
Where did, where, when I was a kid, there was a drive-in over here somewhere, what street was that?
There's a strip mall there now.
It was Plant, yeah, Plant and-
It was on Plant Street, was it called Starlight or something?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, Starlight.
So Blueford Avenue, guys, is going to be a mess for a while, Blueford Avenue is going to be a mess.
People are asking, like you-
It's, what's going to happen is, once, it's going to go from Delaware to McKee is going to be the next phase, when they're doing the sewer and the streetscape, and then from McKee to Silver Star, and it's just-
So there will be Ts for laterals for the other streets?
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, yeah, and not only just, not only the 50-inch force main, but there's going to be, I call them trunk lines, that will go and connect and, yes.
Can I tell you my experience with the sewer that we installed, and you all probably know I worked for the city of Winter Park, but the stretch of Fairbanks, if you're familiar, or if you're not, it's from I-4 to 1792, very blighted area, because it's nothing but tattoo parlors and massage parlors.
Wicket Park?
Because there's no sewer, there was, up until a year and a half ago, we built the sewer, and since then, it's, it's taken off, it started a little slow, but Four Rivers already blew up and built their, their giant restaurant, Lombardi's moved over there, you know, they, they vacated their other site and it's starting to redevelop already.
That's what I say, once we get those, that infrastructure in place and we let people know that it's going to be owned there, they'll, those properties that are now residential will become more valuable to commercial entities and private owners and mom-and-pop places that all make it interesting.
There's also a way to raise some funds on this, would be like a special taxing district.
MT.
Because you're not-
MTD.
Yeah, I mean, that, that'll work.
Now, we did a logo, we just had, we, we tried to make this downtown study not staff-oriented, not staff-driven, not city-driven, we hired consultants, we told them, you're going to, you're going to maintain the webpage, you're doing the content, we, we wanted to do some sort of a logo that said we're doing something, so we came up with a logo, Ocoee Downtown by the Lake Shore, that can change, the hope is that the downtown committee stays, informs, if you'll see a lot of cities that are trending, that the downtown authority kind of takes over and has their website, does all their, they become an authority, and, and that's what needs to happen after this, and come up with an identity for downtown, so. So that logo was not the new city logo, it was just a logo, just something we put out there just to get people to know that there's a study on the downtown, so.
Something separate.
We had a, the Downtown Merchants Association had a, St. Patrick's Day had a very successful outing, the next one will be April the 28th, and they're trying to be consistent and have them on the fourth Thursday of, of each month, so make sure that, they're, they're working, you know, the merchants on downtown are really working trying to, it was like, you know, stale for so many years, and now it's, there's cementress, you know, with the city.
We know what it can be, we've seen the roads blocked off and packed.
Right, yeah.
Our next step in the downtown study is to do a workshop where they, they take everyone's comments and kind of draw it into a plan and take some more public comment, we're just having trouble finding a date that we can get a space that works.
Is the school available over there? I know we did, we didn't want the, we did want the school.
We're trying not to do everything at night, a lot of this is done during the day, because there's a lot of, it's done during the day, so it, it won't work.
Schools won't work, no. Okay, well, thank you very much for the information, any questions, or, with that, we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm so moved, fully adjourned.
All those in favor, leave.
Thank you.